All right.
All right.
She's not focused, though.
So what would Dave say? He'd say welcome. And we're now live. And we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, we are. Okay, come on. Do you have a mic there? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unaggoned, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our chair is gonna be a little bit late tonight, but we have and Marlo Herrick. So we're gonna kinda fill in together for a little bit.
Dance.
Yep. And I guess I will look over to Dana for any announcements.
Well, I have a few announcements that are, I guess they're interesting to the public or maybe not. At the last meeting, we had talked about Little Hill Road and the fiber from TDS. I talked to Rich Little from TDS, and he arranged to meet with Emmett. I'm not sure where that stands right now. But a lot of that, I call it fiber, he calls it copper. A lot of what it is, is no longer used by TDS.
And that's in that pathway where we may wanna ditch it, but we haven't dared to ditch it to help with the drainage.
We'd still probably have DigSafe scope it out. Emmett was concerned about DigSafe.
But it's more or less no longer being used in that area.
They, that's what they tell me.
That's what they say.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's kinda good news because that might help if we end up doing anything to fix Little Hill. You gotta ditch it so that the water doesn't keep.
Well, I have experience in my life of the bulldozer going through something like that, and town had to pay for it.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
I don't wanna do that. We had an issue brought up to us about the Riverdale Cemetery. Going back to the 1800s, Barbara Corliss was doing some research, and she feels it's an issue with the deed. And this is, we're talking 1820s and so forth. I did ask the municipal association what their suggestion was, and they said, well, you should consult your own attorney. I didn't wanna pay to consult our own attorney. So, and I thought, why? If it's a problem, it will come up at some point.
Did she say what the problem was?
Oh, it's a deed, it's a title, title thing, and it's, you know, she researches these things, and it's a, it's a piece of land that someone sold, and they exempted out the burial place. And then it ended up being owned by the town of Boscombe because we were Boscombe, and then they deeded it to us in 1860. You may not remember that.
No, I don't know.
Anyway. I just, I haven't called John about it, thinking, I didn't wanna pay the money to,
No, right.
For something that, who knows, it may, if it comes to be, we'll have to, but.
Right, right, that's one way we use them. I agree.
I received the education tax from the DRA today for 2024, which this one for 2024, obviously, is next year. But I thought I would just mention, this is just the state education from out. This is not the local. Last year in 2022, it was 328,649. This year, on your tax bill, it's gonna be based on 445,156. Next year, however, it's down to 420,504.
Oh, wow. I wonder what happened in between. Let's be quick.
A lot of that depends on, you know, the state and grants and funding and so forth. But I thought that was of some interest. And finally, I've been waiting.
We're talking almost another $100,000.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I've been waiting for word on our hazard mitigation grant request. Our hazard mitigation plan is up this year. In fact, I think it expires in a couple of weeks. And the, the state and/or feds, I'm not sure who has been behind in getting this funding out. This is about a $10,000 item, of which the town is responsible for $1,000, either by cash or in kind. But today I did receive the applicant, the same applications I filled out in April. They wanted me to fill them out again, which, so I did. So I'm hoping, and they know.
Yeah, you must have had coffee, so it was a little bit easier.
I did, it was pretty easy.
Yeah, good. And you found them?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
That was amazing.
Yeah, right.
Anyhow. I guess I just wanted you to be aware that the plan is expiring in October. It will not be renewed in time, but everyone knows that. Boscombe's in the same situation. So.
What is the, what is the?
It's a plan for hazard mitigation, and it's, it's, it's quite a comprehensive plan that, you know, addresses a lot of hazards that we should be aware of. And you would think.
Chemical-wise.
We wouldn't have a lot, but, you know, when you have a group that's putting this together for $10,000, it's amazing.
How many you have? I bet there is. How we ever, how the West was won.
Right, exactly. And thank you, Marlo, that's all I had.
Okay. All right. Appointments. Martin Bender.
So, I am here for the Webster Historical Society. And let me, I should've made two copies, shouldn't have three.
That's okay.
Yeah.
We can speed read.
Okay. So you know what I'm here for? I'm here for the highway marker. So, our proposal is, and you've certainly seen the highway markers.
Yes, yes.
And there is one in the town of Webster. Well, think about it.
Right, well, I know, well, well, I know, I know, not that this even matters, but my mom and my aunt were, looked them up, and were going around to all the different ones throughout the state.
Oh, yeah, right.
It is kinda really neat.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you see the ones in Salisbury and Boscombe.
There isn't one in Salisbury.
I thought there was one, so maybe, maybe I'm thinking something different, then?
Well, there is the one, I think the closest one to us is the one for Daniel Webster.
That's what, yeah.
Right, that's actually in Franklin. I know that there's, there's somewhat of a controversial,
Oh, okay.
Between Salisbury and Franklin, but apparently, it's Franklin.
Okay, that's the one I was thinking of.
Yeah. But anyway, there is not one in the town of Webster, which I think gives us a better chance for this. First of all, we have to do, we have to, we have to go through the whole process here. And it probably, it usually takes two to three years to go through everything. And of course, a lot of it is, I don't know whether you call it luck, but there's, there are, you know, we are in the process of, here's what we're saying, and, and, you know, there might be other ones which are more desirable for them. Anyway, of course, what we're trying to do is put it in front of the old meeting house. Best thing is, of course, that it is on a state highway, because that's where they have to be on state property. So that's great, so we're, we have that. And you can see what we're, we wanna say about it. This was, there was a subcommittee, me, Barbara Corliss, of course, Michelle, and Alberta, you know, anyway. And so we came up with, that's what we wanna do, and of course, there's a limit as to, you know, how many characters it's got who can have, you know, all that stuff. But anyway. So, that's the only one that was proposed to the, I can't remember what their, what their title is. Anyway. And they will no doubt change it. Everybody said that, but.
Meaning what you're saying.
Yeah, yes. They review it, and of course, we have to give them, we have to give them a lot of documentation to prove it.
Of course.
Right, yeah, well, it makes sense. And so, one of the things I thought that we did have to do, I remember going through this, you know, the, you know, here's a, but this changed in January of '23. And I couldn't find anything in here which says that I have to get approval from the municipality. Anyway, I'm here to do that, just in case we do need it. And, you know, so hopefully, the two of you, since Dave's not here. Anyway, if you'll, if you can agree that there's nothing controversial about that. But the other thing is, of course, that there is, there's the money for it. Now, the state, the state will pay for it. If, and the state has to, they have to approve, I think the statute says they have to approve at least four a year. So even if there isn't any more money, they have to approve for you. They can go up to 10 a year. However, if they say, well, you know, we got, these are more desirable, we can also find a way to pay for it without the state paying for it. So I just wanna ask you, because I'm thinking, you know, maybe the Meeting House Society can raise the money. It's about, it's about between 2,500 and 3,000. But there's also the possibility of the town paying for it. And I was thinking that perhaps, and I don't know how long it will take for them to either approve it and say, yeah, we put it on our list, or they'll say, you know, no, we haven't got money for it now. I'm thinking that maybe we can put it before the town has a warrant article.
Good idea. That's what I was gonna just say, I mean, that, I didn't know if that's what we would have to do.
Do all these signs have to look the same? Is that how this idea, so they all?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Well, I didn't, yeah, that's what I did.
And what happens is, you know, it has a title on the top.
Yeah.
And, you know, you can see ours would simply say, you know, Old Webster Meeting House. And then there are, I can't remember the number of the characters that can go into it, and so many lines. So, you know, so we were, we kept editing it and editing it, you know, because I think the first thing we had was like at least twice as long.
Of course.
So I think it's pretty good. I like the very end of it, which, of course, that was my, my proposal. Because I thought the whole idea of the, the meeting house being taken from, you know, from.
Would've been lost.
Right, well, but I also mentioned in there, I wanna put in there that it's, it was taken up there from the, the old Webster Village, and it was carried up the hill by one horse.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
That's neat. Do you wanna just read it so the people at home can?
You can read it, but I read so slowly.
Okay, well. All right, so 1791 Webster Meeting House, that's the top. Originally called the Westerly Meeting House, this rail building is surviving, an 18th century meeting house, is a surviving 18th century meeting house. It is a landmark and historic preservation and a physical example of the 1819 Tolerance Act, separating church and state. Commended in the 1941 for construction of the Blackwater Dam, it was rescued by citizens and moved here by the Walter Hill Company using a single horse and capson.
That sounds good.
That's very nice, I think it's awesome.
So we'll see whether, you know, of course, like I said, it might get edited by the state.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I just wanted to mention to you that I was thinking, you know, maybe, depending on whether we need it or not, I mean, we can possibly just put this in a warrant article, and we'll see. I have no idea how long it takes them to accept it or reject it. But I know that we can, we can actually, I mean, it would still be under the state, the state highway, highway marker. But the state can do it without paying for it, so. But anyway, I just wanted, you know, if.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
To go with war?
Yeah.
I'd motion to go forward that. That's great, Marty, appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your time and effort, because I, this is, I mean, between, you know, Webster and Boscombe, I mean, the history that we have in these, both these towns is pretty cool. I mean, I live in a place that's got quite a bit of history, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's awesome. It's my second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Could I?
Yeah, right, you can keep that, thank you.
Well, does he have another copy?
I'm sure mine.
I just thought it'd be good for the.
Yes. Thank you very much, thanks, Marty.
Where's Russ?
He's down fixing the camera.
Okay.
Why is, are we not looking?
We broke the camera, right?
It's because Dave's not here.
Right, because, well, I was hoping that Dave would be. Anyway, I just have to know for Friday, you know, because Friday's our movie.
Movie night.
Ah, that's right, yes.
So I wanna make sure that.
It works.
Yeah, because last time.
We do expect it.
Okay.
And thank you for everything you do, Marty, it's really appreciated.
I was driving from Logan.
Fun balance. Not the fun, but the fun. Oh, there he is. Right in time for the fun to balance.
Oh, awesome. Apologies, everybody.
You just didn't wanna come to this meeting, any excuse.
Is the, the, the sound system working for the, for the film?
I assume so.
Okay, anyway, I'll come in earlier, obviously, not on Friday, and I'll just try it.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, thank you both.
Carry on, I see that.
Sure. Next. Because we're on our favorite thing.
The fun balance.
Fun.
As you remember, your last meeting, you wanted to change the goal of retainage. We had originally, I think we had 6% to 10% in our former policy, and the recommendation was for 10% to 12%. So I've just changed that in our policy, and I was hoping you would be willing to sign it tonight.
You all right back there?
I have the stuff I normally do before anyone gets here.
I know, right?
That's all right, we'll forgive you, Dave, I'll just say.
Yes, absolutely. Did you get the camera good?
I got it working.
It's actually good.
Didn't like it when Dave wasn't here. Updated draft, refusal, disposal, agreement.
Yes, after our meeting last Monday night, there were many suggestions for changes, and Neil took on the responsibility of incorporating them for you. And so I guess I wanted, hopefully you reviewed it, and you're in agreement, or do you have any further questions?
I would look to the chair, because I thought it looked pretty good before we went to there, so. And then, boop. So, yeah, I mean, kinda think we're agreeing to get along and do what we're supposed to do, is the way I look at it.
Right, right.
I just wanted to check one of the sets of what they said. Apologize, I haven't, I've had family in town, and I haven't had a chance to look at too much in detail.
And you don't have to make a decision tonight if you'd like more time.
It's a lot of reading. What a factor. We have audience, too.
Two and a half, so not too much of it is different. Let's see. Annually, in a joint select board meeting, to vote on the recommended operating budget and capital expenses budget, so that's, that it will have gone through the CIP process, which is addressed in the next one. There must be a quorum of each select board. Most of that is language from the previous stuff. Oh, then that's fun balance stuff. So, it looks deceptively easy, because it's only one page now. I would've expected there to be more.
I've got two pages.
And I think I have, I guess, the front side of it.
Oh, maybe that, well. Maybe that's what's done.
When you're scanning along, right? Who's these people that put stuff on the back?
Procedures for the budget. So initial prepared by assigned staff of Hopkington Select Board, that's what they do. Proposed operating budget presented by, to the joint select board meeting. Majority voted those present to accept or modify the budget at joint meeting. Shall then be submitted to the budget committees of each town. We don't have one that's us. But they do, so that's fine. All of the failure stuff is the same. New programs are to be approved contingent upon both towns approving the program. Should either town wish to implement a new program without this contingency, they will be responsible for all costs surrounding said program, but also gain all revenues from the program. So that's the language we talked about while we were at the joint meeting last Monday at their select board meeting. Further approved by legislative body of both towns, so it will go to all of the people. And the usuals for the rest. So that looks fine to me. Have we sent it through legal yet, or no?
Not yet, I wanted you to see it first.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts?
No, I think you covered what be, what you brought to, like, at the last, last one, Monday, so. Sounded, you know, just to make sure that everything was equal, and, not equal, because we're not equal, but meaning, everybody's gotta say, the proper people have a say in what's happening. That's what I feel like you did. Right?
Yes.
The thing that I don't see in there that was mentioned was the at least annually review of the ordinance. Because that was the option to be able to change it. And so I'd be curious why that was left out, or if it was deemed not to be needed because of the ordinance or similar.
I will speak to Neil about it. Easy enough to lose track of these things.
Well, yeah, I think he did a pretty good, you know, it was a lot.
Yeah.
But off the top of my head, that's the only one I'm remembering that was brought up that I don't see addressed.
At least an annual review of the agreement.
It was the, it was the ordinance they were talking about, because the ordinance was a joint select board change, so if something needed to be addressed more quickly, then changing and modifying the agreement, that's when and how it would be done. But the, the ordinance and what is outlined in it would be at least annually looked at.
Okay, I will talk to Neil about that.
Sounds good. Want we go to the next thing? Oh, I like this part. Pond Hill Culvert.
Well, you remember a few weeks ago, Dr. Emley was here, and talked to you about the Pond Hill Culvert. And I did do some research back, trying to follow up on, I think the main question, there are a few questions, the Class 6 highway issue. And I did send you a letter from 2000 that the town attorney at that time had spoken about that. And, and I think that, speaking about that, he said that, and, and it's changed because of the emergency lane as well, so that the town would be able to replace that without violating an RSA.
And so is that just our understanding, or was that a specific question to our legal or the like?
Again, I want your opinion before I contact legal on it. But that's from what I got from our former attorney. And I did review the, some of the select board minutes, because I wanted to just understand what it was. I had not found what happened until Dr. Emley pointed out that, that the board at that time made a motion in a non-public session to not to go forward with the project because of White Plains Road.
Why would that be in a non-public?
I was gonna say, that's not legal, is it?
That does, maybe there's, maybe there's some other reason for the non-public.
Right.
And it's not added in.
Anyway, I, I didn't think to look in the non-public minutes, so.
No, I wouldn't either.
I did talk with, I do have a question out to Chad, and I haven't heard back from him per se, but I have a, a rough estimate that, again, this is not etched in stone.
And that estimate was from years ago.
This estimate was from years ago.
Well, 2000.
And that figure was given to us by the former engineer
Yes.
on the project. I did convert that to today's money, and I'm still very skeptical that we could replace it for, I think it came out to $69,000. The permit work alone would probably run us about $20,000 between the engineering and the permit fees. The culvert itself would be a much smaller culvert. I was hoping to get a price for you. But just as a point of reference, we paid $100,000 for the one on White Plains. This is not as, not as large. There may also be added issues with the, the lake and DES and things that we have to consider.
It would really be hard to put a number until we got
So, it would be very difficult, you know, I think that.
Not anyways. Because, like you said, you never know what
Right, right.
that would be different.
So I guess I give it back to you with how you'd like to proceed. I know you had spoken last time with maybe putting it on a warrant article.
So, if we're going to do the work, then we'll have to appropriate the funds for it. The most straightforward way to do that is with a warrant article that adds additional money into the Bridges and Culverts Fund to be able to be used for this. Have we heard anything from Craig regarding his attempts of use of the pond and/or capturing land for the town?
All I've heard from Craig is that the family told him no.
Okay.
Well, that is a decision.
So that makes it so that that is not a consideration to try and put the two together, at least at this point in time. So, yeah, the straightforward answer is probably the easiest answer. But we would need to have accurate, or at least close accurate, numbers to be able to present to the town and folks to do that. Regarding the Town of Webster Boat Launch that isn't the Town of Webster's Boat Launch, what, if anything, could be found out about that?
The Town of Webster's Boat Launch?
They have private property over there that's being used as a boat launch that apparently is listed as the Town of Webster's Boat Launch for, that's a public boat launch to Lakeview Pocket. Or, so they were saying, when they came to present to us.
Is this on the White Plains Road side?
They were saying it was
Pond Hill.
Over the Pond Hill.
On the other side.
Yeah, White Plains, I do believe there is.
I didn't.
I believe there is, actually.
There's, there should be some sort of access from White Plains.
Yes, yes. But a lot of people.
But they're talking about.
Right, a lot of people use the other side, which he's probably gonna comment on.
I've seen the one in White Plains.
But, but that is actually privately owned. So you, what you're concerned about is that that's kinda being listed as one.
Well, yes, and then also, if we're doing this set of repairs, then that may just encourage even more traffic and everything if we're not figuring out what's going on and not having it listed as town. Like, this, this shouldn't be a public thing from the town
Right.
for that. That's my thinking. I know you're running the meeting now, so we'll try to have this.
Well, no, no. You can take over any time, my friend.
I don't know if I understand where it's listed.
I don't know, that's what they mentioned, uh, when they came and presented to us.
Have you, do you know of it being listed somewhere? Have you, do you know of it being listed somewhere?
I can't say specifically about that, but just to clarify, there are two boat accesses now to Lake Minutetucket. One is off White Plains Road. That's a very small one. It doesn't really accommodate any big boats. That's owned, it's an easement owned by the Lake Minutetucket Conservation Association. All Webster residents are welcome to use it, but that's not the one that I think you're talking about. The one you're talking about is just off Pond Hill Road. Before the split, the Westman Village, there's a larger boat access there. It's on private property. As far as I know, it's owned by a private person who has given access to anyone that wants to use it.
Right. That's what we're trying to talk about.
That's what we're talking about.
Yep, yep. And I just think he was concerned that it was listed somewhere, but that's because somebody said that, maybe the last meeting.
It is listed under New Hampshire Boat Launches.
Maybe that was you that said that, yeah, yeah.
There's a little picture of a car with a canoe on top of it.
On, in that one, not, not the one that you, that the association owns.
White Plains Road, but the one across the culvert on Pond Hill. It, you know, it doesn't, it's just, it's just that. It doesn't say anything more than that, but it's listed as a picture there. Other boat launches will have boats.
It's like a state. It, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just meant, is this a state, is this where you've seen it, like on a state website or something? I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry.
There's boats that are from Massachusetts. They, there probably is at least six to seven boats at one time, and trailers, that are using that at any particular time. It's used, you see people there early morning till dark. So it's well-used.
I'd be curious to know what the requirements by the state are for showing up on that and why that might show up instead of the more official one off of White Plains Road. Especially considering the classic road and the quality of it.
Is it New Hampshire Fish and Game? Is that the website I'm thinking of, or?
Well, it might be. I just Googled New Hampshire Boat Launches and I came across that they are.
I'll do a little research on that.
Just so that we, if we do anything moving forward, we're, like he's pointing out, we don't want to enhance it to a level of despair. Is that good?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. So do we have any more in regards to that?
I don't know.
The only thing I think in long, something I've read years ago, is that the state wants, like wanted all lakes in New Hampshire to have an access. Now, whether that's something that they still do or not, I don't know.
And I remember hearing that too.
Oh, you do? Good. I didn't make it up.
No, well, I just, yeah, beside, well, my mom, Pond Minutetucket, and there isn't much access, which is good and bad.
I can address that point historically. Early in the two thousands, maybe two thousand and two, the state of New Hampshire came and talked to Conservation Association, wanting to purchase that and actually create a state-operated boat launch with signs and outhouses and parking and all, all nine yards.
Oh, wow.
They had a lot of momentum. Things were different in those days, but the, the deal fell through. I think one of the big issues was the state did not want to have any liability associated with what might happen there. It was gonna be costly. It was gonna influence the Westman Village access. A lot of parts to it. So the state just kind of took their dollies and went home. They never, they never actually made a bid for it, but they were talking like they wanted to. And they haven't been back since. I think the liability of the thing is really what did it.
Today, especially in today's day.
And they would be responsible, they, I mean, it was very complicated. They say, how much do you guys really want this to be here? And are you gonna look after it also? Because it's your access to property. It was a big, round and round discussion.
Well, I know when my kids were little, they had, we had public swimming lessons on the
Yeah.
off of White Plains Road, which I thought was great. So all the kids had swimming lessons and it was nice.
At Austin, at the nursing home.
Yeah, right, exactly. And it was terrific. I mean, I thought it was terrific. So all my kids had the lessons, so. I wish we could do that again, to tell you the truth.
They apparently don't do it anywhere in the state, because I've been talking to a couple of gals that used to teach there. And they say that the Red Cross, isn't Red Cross lake swimming anywhere.
Really? Isn't that, that's terrible. That was such a good thing for all the kids. And it was Red Cross swimming lessons, it was, and the girl came from Warner.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Any more comment on Pond Hill?
So I think our question would be well, I, I think the question that we are going to have to ask, no matter what the result was, how and when and why and if it should be on that website, is what costs are going to be. Because we need to have some form of accurate estimate
For the culvert replacement you're talking about.
For the project to consider putting it on the warrant article.
Agreed.
And that timeframe is really short at this point, since warrant articles are coming up soon along with budgeting, so.
The other issue that we're not discussing tonight, which was a, a big point that Warren made at the last meeting, was the environmental aspect of this. You know, we're concerned about the amount of silt that is coming into the lake. And that's an environmental picture of this puzzle that shouldn't be overlooked. Because the lake is healthy. We want it to stay that way, for the residents of Webster and everyone else. So it's more than just the Pond Road plus six road problem. I think it involves a lot of environmental issues as well. I've been around forty years here, and in the past, when Dave Richardson was the selectman, I remember meeting on Pond Hill Road halfway up with Chip Silly and others and DES. And they wanted to do work, have us do work in a cost range around a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to prevent further silt damage and runoff. If the silt continues into the lake, it's gonna plug the culvert and we're gonna have an awful problem. So I think that that's an issue I'd like to have you look in at in a little more depth if you so feel warranted.
Which it kind of will be when we're looking at pricing it anyways. They'll be, just like they are on closed pin breach. I mean, they're very involved, right?
And even White Plains.
White Plains, right, right, right. That's a better example, White Plains, but.
The type and size of culvert and the flow characteristics and everything are all taken into account by both the engineer and DES.
Right.
So we can get a estimate of what the project might kind of range. And that gives us something that we can look at for a warrant article. But to the point of what the solution is, that would be mostly based on the engineering and DES.
I just wanna be sure I understand, Dana, what you said about the class six road issue. That you researched this and you found that the Town of Webster can actually participate in the rehabilitation of that culvert, even though it's a class six status? That piece of it is now of consideration, or is that still being debated?
From the research I did, the answer is yes, the town could do this work. However, I have not sent it to our own attorney to be reviewed, which I will, to make sure.
I think that's a big piece of it, because if that's really the truth, the town can actually legally do something there, that really makes it a little easier to get the facts and get all this sort of conceptualized, you know, let's, let's do this maybe sort of.
Yeah, that was a big.
Otherwise, we get into an argument among lawyers about class six this and class six that. And that goes nowhere.
And from the, the notes that we have from the town meeting discussing the original warrant article that did not pass, two of the, the major points were, well, because it's a class six road, and then it would be a misappropriation of funds as a result.
Right.
The thing that makes it better for the town now than then to be possibly able to do this is that while it's still a class six road, it's also an emergency right of way. So the details of what level of access improvement, et cetera, would be allowable legally in there, I'll completely leave to our lawyers when that's asked, but that's the one thing that might help the cause and case in that aspect.
Thank you very much for all the work you're doing on this. I know it's a process.
It's a learning process.
For all of us.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Assessing proposals.
Yes, I knew you were excited about this. And I didn't give this to you before, because I've just finished analyzing, and, and I don't really.
You have two. I got one.
Do you have one? Okay.
That's right, we can share.
I have one. And I don't expect you to make a decision tonight. I was, the hardest thing is, we did receive three bids for assessing services. And getting them so that you can compare, so that you're talking
Apples for apples.
And apples is, is quite a feat. So let me just go down what I can tell you about what we have. We did receive a proposal from Avatar Associates of New England. They're a very well-known company. We use their software. And their proposal was for, they would, for each year of twenty-four through twenty-seven, we would be responsible to pay thirty-nine thousand dollars, whether we had one pickup or five hundred pickups. And, and I'll explain that as I go along, but that would be the general assessing plus the one-fourth of town research, looking at properties to update our information that we have. The total contact, contract price is a hundred ten thousand four hundred.
Is that from twenty-four?
The one-ten-four, I didn't add that right. The one-ten-four is the last year, one, two, three, four, for the update.
Because that's the full update of the, okay.
So let me just understand this. Each year, they would charge us forty grand?
Thirty-nine thousand.
I know, right?
Yes, except the last year of the five.
Yeah.
Now.
If it were my husband, it would be twenty-nine thousand. No, anyways, so.
So, and the, so the yearly cost, it would be, four years would be at thirty-nine thousand. The fifth year would be at a hundred ten thousand four hundred, which is the thirty-nine thousand plus seventy-one four for the actual updating of the values. The entire five-year contract was, is two hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred.
I may need to, I may, should know this, but what are they doing for thirty-nine thousand? I mean, I get when they get to the part where they're updating things and.
That includes looking at one-fourth of the properties in town to update information on those properties.
And also does land use change taxes. They answer questions from customers, abatements.
Pickups, splits, you know, these are people.
Things that are reported on those property forms that we hand out each year.
Okay, all right.
So that's, you know, that's a solid thirty-nine thousand.
And this is Avatar, right?
They include that.
Okay.
Uh, the next.
Does, does it by chance include the licenses to their software?
It does not.
Good question. Yeah, that's why we.
Good try.
Maybe you could go back to that.
Yeah, well, maybe. So.
Because what is the license? You know, off the top of your head? No, me neither. Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're expensive, and we have one for the town clerk, the tax collector, and the assessor. And that probably runs about ten thousand dollars a year. The next bidder is coming for Niren Perkins, which is our current vendor. And I tried to show you here that they have estimated that we have an annual hundred twenty-five pickups, which I don't believe we did last year, and I, I think that's pushing it.
Can I ask a question? What, what do you mean by a hundred and twenty-five pickups? I think of a pickup.
Not that kind of pickup.
I know.
Some sort of change in a property card.
Right.
Yeah.
Somebody just upgraded, somebody removed a thing.
You added a room, you.
So on an average, they say in the Town of Webster, there's about a hundred and twenty-five.
That's what, that's.
Where, where the number for Avatar is Avatar, they did not give you one?
They did not. That's included in the thirty-nine thousand.
Gotcha. Gotcha. So what if you go over one-twenty-five?
The, the, well, they charge you forty-six dollars per pickup. So what you don't know is how many pickups you're gonna have.
Right.
So it's hard to, to say, I think last year, and I don't remember the exact number, but I thought you had like something like eighty pickups.
I'm not sure.
Something like that.
And turnover at the campground is also pickups, because you're changing, adding, updating who's there, who's not.
Yeah, and that's a decent, I think that's.
So each of them are a pickup, so sometimes it's, it's a lot more, sometimes it's not.
Right.
We abate more than we do anything there, don't we? All right, go ahead. Sorry, I'll shut up.
So basically, the, looking at the, the four years that they're gonna look at all the properties, they're charging in thirteen thousand two fifty for that. And that does not include the pickups or the abatements. You can see if they're using an abatement, they charge an hourly rate of sixty-five dollars an hour. The final year, they're charging thirty-four thousand for the work they would do to update the values. So that's a total of eighty-seven thousand. However, it does not include pickups. And we ran into this in the budget last year, I think it was, that we hadn't accounted for that. Or if we have an abatement case that they have to work on.
Gotcha.
What should we do? We usually have about one or two a year.
Yeah.
And what would that average cost? Who knows?
Depends if it's contested or not. I mean, if it goes to the BTLA, it's a little different than if it's just a in-house, what I call in-house abatement work, that they can come to an agreement and advise the board to either grant or deny.
Right.
So that's the, the issue with that is we would budget eighty-seven thousand dollars over five years for the, the revow work, and we'd have to be mindful of an average, maybe, of what we would spend in addition. The last contractor's cross-country appraisal that the town had immediately before CNP.
Can, can you quickly to, uh, refresh what the cyclical part is, the three ninety-six and four hundred?
Cyclical is the, and I didn't put the figures in, but cyclical is the valuation that they're gonna do of the, update the information on the properties a quarter of the town each year.
So what's the number representing then?
That number is, they're estimating is three hundred ninety-six properties. Per year.
Which is the quarter. Quarter, which is the quarter, right?
Right. They estimate we had fifteen eighty-five properties, and it, it runs about fifteen ninety, sixteen hundred. Uh, cross-country appraisal, basically, we're looking at the same issue. The thirty-four seven fifty takes care of the cyclical with the final year being the actual update of the values. I don't understand what they mean by twenty-twenty-seven callback thirty thousand dollars. All I can think of is that, that would, what they estimate if they had to go and relook at a property. Maybe two years after they looked at it, maybe something else happened to it, and they would go back. Maybe two years after they looked at it, maybe something else happened to it and they would go back. I would put that more in general assessing myself. And again, you don't know with the general assessing how much you're going to have. He's estimated it out, but um that's what it is, it's an estimate. Looking at this, it does look like the CNP is the least cost. But any of these firms could certainly do the job.
Yeah, and they could fluctuate a little bit.
Utilities.
Oh, thank you, Russ. Um, cross-country appraisal did include utilities, whereas uh CNP did not, Avatar did. And right now, our utility appraiser, because we have CNP and we, they don't do utilities, we had a contract of uh just under eleven thousand per year for that.
So the other two do, so we would wanna add eleven thousand to the eighty-seven?
Uh, mm, yes.
Per year.
Yes. Yeah, so you.
Oh, no, per year, you're right.
Forty-four thousand for that.
So the.
Assuming you could come up with a similar contract.
So this thirteen-three-fifty would be actually twenty-four something, right? Per year?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, so they've also got the pickup portion, et cetera, and just doing the napkin math of one-twenty-five times forty-six and one-twenty-five times fifty, we're gonna have roughly five thousand dollars in pickups per year for CNP and roughly six thousand per year for pickups with cross-country. Just, just using the estimated numbers that are sitting there.
Right.
But it does make it a little, it makes this eighty-seven up quite a bit closer because it does include in utilities on the co- cross-country, correct?
Yes.
Because you said it's eleven thousand per year.
Yes. So if we add sixteen hundred to it, so twenty-nine-two-fifty is the CNP, including the utility appraiser that's not actually CNP because they don't do it. The. My question with cross-country, because I, I only have the Avatar one here, is that eleven thousand to the utility appraiser includes him defending what he said, should any court.
Yes.
Issues arise. Avatar's points out that while they include their utility, it also is, where's the page that just had it? Utility work is, any needed updates to properties for new construction or defense of these values cost, are built additionally at the annual rate of, which is currently a hundred-eighty-five dollars per hour. So if you got into actual litigation or defense of why aren't you abating this, et cetera, that becomes expensive.
It could be, yes.
Do, how is that in the cross-country agreement?
Well, and I will say, cross-country's um proposal, which is probably buried here somewhere, was of one sheet. Uh, I think I may have given you a copy of it.
Oh, the pro- costs, this one, the cost breakdown?
That was their, um, yes, that's it, Marlo.
Oh, sorry, I was just looking at the uh. You passed it. That's it. That's what we got.
So it was, for lack of a better way to put it, it was, it's a lot more informal.
What is this, what am I looking at here? This cost breakdown?
So they're breaking utilities into at least two parts for telephone utilities and other.
Who is this? Who is this?
That's cross-country appraisal.
This is cross-country.
Yeah.
So, so their two-hundred-and-fifteen is actually two-fifty-eight, is that what they said?
Talk about patio.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so this, this is not included, this chart.
I took that out that day because, again, we don't know where we'd be. I'm just trying to make it apples to apples.
Can you tell us what we have spent in twenty-three with um CNP?
We have not finished out our contract for the year and I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but it's their contract, their current contract. I guess you have some right here.
Yeah, let's, you know what I'm trying to get at. I, I, I do feel like Webster's kind of unique. We, we don't have a lot of development and stuff going on. So, so some of these costs would be like, huh, you better take the.
Well, that's why it's difficult.
Number that's not gonna move a lot, right?
That's why it's difficult to really estimate.
That, yeah, yeah.
Got, you know.
So each one of them seems to have their benefits and their, their drop.
Have we had any problems with CNP?
I, I don't say, we have had a few issues as far as response time. I don't, I, can you think of anything else?
Uh, I think there was a lot of growing pain when we first started with them. I think it's doing a lot better now than it was in the beginning.
And I think we've learned what, how to ask them.
Yeah, how to navigate them.
And that's, that's changed, changed a little, little bit, so.
How about, how about the towns around us? Do they know?
A lot of them use Avatar from.
Boston uses Avatar.
They've been around a long time.
Oh, they have, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them.
They, they really do.
Avatar is a big fish.
They're a big fish, exactly, yeah.
That's why everyone uses their software.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have very good software, you know. I honestly don't know what town, other, other towns, because I know the town that I live in, they use CNP.
CNP.
Okay.
I don't know what Warner uses.
Yeah.
What, they use?
I was trying to think if I knew what Warner used.
Oh, trying to think.
Because I talk to Tom all the time, he might have discussed it, but I can't remember. So in looking at this, best case for cross-country would be that their utility numbers here include future defense of their results. Even so, the total of the thirty-four or seven-fifty per year is still gonna be higher than the twenty-nine-two-fifty, that is the rough average of the cost plus pickups plus the eleven thousand you pay the utility appraiser separately when going with CNP. And then, of course, the thirty-nine thousand for Avatar. So I think by a significant margin, CNP is going to be the least expensive option. The, I don't believe there were issues with cross-country previously, but I was not sitting on the board at the time and our staff wasn't here at the time.
I wasn't aware of that. I have worked with cross-country in the past and I've found them to be very efficient and professional.
So I don't.
I suspect that the figure for the utilities would not include defense. I mean, I'm, but.
That makes sense. Which Avatar's doesn't either.
Which Avatar's does not as well.
Well, we've got somewhat of a comfort level, we've worked out some of the bugs with CNP.
And, and as far as the utility stuff, we know that some utility work is expected to be coming in one of many different forms, whether it's through things like the solar project, whether it's through things like the um, whatever they're calling it, the upgrade of the transmission, et cetera.
I also think the utility appraiser that the town uses now is probably the most knowledgeable on this subject.
Yes.
And, which is why he's not inexpensive.
He's the one most of the others go to to ask questions.
If he went, if something went to court.
And that's who we use under CNP.
Yes, we've hired him as a separate, yeah, vendor.
So do we decide?
You didn't, I mean, I didn't expect you to make a decision tonight because it's, there are so many factors in this.
But is there any reason, is there some reason that you wouldn't?
I think it's obvious, in my opinion, that CNP is the most cost-effective. I like.
As the folks that um have to deal with them on a regular basis versus us.
Right.
Do you feel that it would make sense for us to go with CNP? Or do you feel that the uh slight additional cost of cross-country would be worthwhile?
Well, I look at you, Russ. Um, I have no.
I have no issues.
Working with CNP.
Okay, working with CNP.
Um, I think that we have had a few bumps in the road and they have been responsive when, when I've gotten on the phone and.
Don't know that you wouldn't have had it with.
And you could have had it with someone else.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of the things I tested it to, new assessors, new staff at the same time.
My biggest complaint, and I realize it's difficult, but when they're in town, it would be nice if I knew about it. Until I get a resident that calls me.
And our folks need, and our residents need to know it too.
They're out there and all of those things, and we've had many conversations about that.
You've had with this company and do they ignore it or do they think they might change it?
Well, I think they, they understand what I'm telling them and I think that they're trying to improve it.
Okay, because they have, they've been in business a long time, you would think, if they were, they would think, well, you gotta tell people what's going on.
Well, you know, I understand they can't pinpoint it down to the minute, but I just wanna know, we're gonna be in Webster on Tuesday.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
And we're gonna have identification so that people know.
When they do notify us, it's usually, we're gonna be in town for these three days, driving around in this vehicle, what, can you let the police department know that we're gonna be driving around in this car?
And that's, I'm fine with that.
But it, but it's nice to let the people know too.
Right, because then when somebody calls, well, I put a notification on the website, they're in town, and then I let the police know. So if somebody calls the police department saying a person in a gray SUV was over at my house, we can say, oh, that was the assessor.
Okay.
Because it's a little disconcerting when people don't know, you know, something come to my house.
Especially in this day and age.
Yeah.
So.
I, I personally would, wouldn't mind making a motion to move on from this and accept.
So I, I would agree, except I do wanna ask the one thing that we're kind of glossing over. When does our contract with the utility appraiser end? And do we have a cost, do we have a updated contract number from him?
I do not. Uh, it ends at the end of this year. I've asked them for an updated number and I probably should have asked them two months ago, but um.
Okay.
You're worried that, what if they come back at this?
Like, if, if it's eleven thousand now and it's, say, thirteen thousand.
Right.
We're, it's probably not gonna change our choice of uh overall appraiser. But if it comes back at like fifteen, then that suddenly makes cross-country basically the same rate or possibly lower. So then we have to look at all of the super details in the.
Fair enough. I think what you're saying is, Marlo, don't assume that the eleven is.
So would you like me to get that information?
And then that way we can make them, yeah. And I don't even think, I guess I would, uh, again, the word assuming, which is really naughty, that, that it was, you know, kind of hand to hand, so the eleven was the eleven, so that was a very good point, Dave.
Do we, are we billed extra for Mr. Sansoucy if we need to host a court for us?
No.
Okay, so that should be fair.
And that's the dude that is our.
That's our utility director, so in other words, he can do nothing and we pay him eleven thousand, or he can do a lot and we pay him eleven thousand.
Golly, some of the things we should have done, let him get away with nothing.
Utilities filing abatement every year.
I'm just making a comment, it's.
I know, I'm teasing you. Okay, well, so we're gonna wait for that.
So I'll bring that to, back to you at the next meeting then?
Yes, please.
That would be awesome.
So, final audit.
The final audit um is in. I had emailed it, I believe, to you and I have copies if you would like to memorize it. And you saw the audit letter, um, with the concerns they bring every year, we don't have enough staff. And I don't know what you can do about that. And.
They're gonna have something to say.
The suggestion that they'd like me to enter the deposits into the computer system and that, I don't see happening.
Um, based on the.
I do if I have to, but.
Based on the draft, we, I had given you a couple different uh things to look at and have you come to any conclusion on those or anything to say on them?
Can you remind me what they were?
I know what, for example, one that was kind of me, but also the IT company were some of the policies. But there were also, um, let me see if I've still got my notes from that.
I think that I, you had, we had spoken a little bit about the um IT policy and, and because they said in their recommendations, we should have an IT policy or better IT policy.
And there were a couple others that were uh based on, oh, so for example, one was them suggesting a particular, I'm blanking on the name of it, the uh accounting practices stuff.
The GASP?
Yes, for a particular one for, uh, for example, uh, IT contracted services. And then a couple others of similar that sounded like they might be able to help us or be easy to implement versus stuff like the actuarial that we're probably never gonna implement.
Right, yeah. Yes, the answer is yes on that. I um have talked to Kyle about the uh the IT protection, the IT policy a little bit. As a matter of fact, um, I got an email today from Primex, um, this is a grant that's available for education on uh cybercrime, which I applied for. So, um, because it was fairly easy to do that. And I've also talked to the IT company, which I had talked to them before. Was limited success to get kind of a boilerplate policy that, that we could look at. But it is on my to-do list.
Okay. Primex should be able to give you another couple uh people to talk to, but I know there's also like a local or state version of uh CISA affiliates, which is the federal cybercrime stuff. Um, and they were doing cybercrime training and or help with audits of towns and what you should do uh in past years. So, so they may still be able to do that.
Okay.
I think they are.
Yeah.
I think we had that at the conference last year. I think I know who it is.
That would make sense.
I think I might have briefly talked to him at the conference. All right. So, yeah, we should follow up on those.
Okay. Other than that, the audit was um kind of boilerplate and uh uninspiring.
Good job.
Which is what we want.
That's right. No, it's a good job. I mean, that's, it's somebody coming in and looking over your work.
Yes, well, I'm glad they do.
Right, well, true, right. But highway grant.
Um, that is a signature that's needed. Um, Lieutenant Mitchell asked me to have you have the chair sign this. We need a motion to accept the highway grant. Um, let's see, a piece.
Come on down and tell us about it while he looks for it.
So that is, it's a highway safety grant and it's cash paid for extra patrol, for speed, um, EWI, it's, it's just about anything. But it's, it's pretty good and it's um. um, D W I, it's, it's just about anything, but it's, it's pretty good and it's, um, hey, money that we don't have to take out of our budget, we can put guys on the road and it's day, night, little bit of everything, so.
And that's just something you kinda keep track of, of what that grant is meant for?
Right, so we've already got one speed grant and this is the second one that they offered, so we say, hey, it's gonna be free money to put people on the road.
So, so this is similar to the one where they give us extra money to put some extra hours on one twenty-seven?
Right.
This is not the one that you talked about previously for, uh, being able to pay for a new hire?
Nope, that is a completely separate grant that hasn't come out yet, we haven't seen it.
Okay.
But it's supposed to come out at the end of the year for the first of next year.
Okay.
Um, and that's the one I want, that's, that's the one that's the lot of money, and it'll be good for us, gives us a free patrolman.
So your motion should be for the town to enter into an agreement, um, with the state of New Hampshire um, on the highway safety grant and apply for the highway safety grant, accept the highway safety grant, whatever.
Let me see there.
That's a lot of paper.
Of course, it's from the state, isn't it?
It's always a lot of paper.
Each of you needs to initial where he has highlighted.
Is there any reason that you would even, I mean, we don't, I mean, who doesn't want, nothing's free, we all pay for it, but who would want?
Federal funds pay for it, one video, the highway safety funds pay for it.
Oh, maybe like when it pulls over, no, just kidding.
No, that goes up directly to the state of New Hampshire, they get it all.
So Steve, does this work, um, you bill the state, you send a bill in for the time you've, you've put in and they send, uh, they send the money back?
They send the money to you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
I can't get them the same cash, I've tried.
No more.
Have to initial it.
So yeah, it's, so it's stating that it'll be done, it's our own personnel, you can't subcontract or anything similar, you can't hire someone else to do it. And the grant officer is the representative of the state.
Yes.
So that makes sense. And is it just me or is it?
I believe it's just you and he has noted where.
So sub- receipt grant, signature one, then I see two and three here as well, should that be the whole board?
Oh, he's only put.
Let's see, we, by signing this form, we certify that we complied with any public meeting requirement for acceptance of this grant, included in R S A, blah, 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 uh, chair selectmen, town manager, mayor, or county commissioners. Okay, I guess that's just.
I think you said we need a motion and, and this was our,
was this, uh, did we need to do a public hearing or just a?
You don't need to do a public hearing, cause you've already, you've already got the thirty-one, ninety-five in place.
But you want a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to accept and enter into it.
I make a motion to accept and enter into getting money.
Second that.
Uh, let's see, two. I would say enter into the grant agreement with the.
Office of Highway Safety Grant Agreement.
Second that.
All in, oh wait, you're running a meeting.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I can sign this then.
So they also need, Steve, the minutes of the meeting, which we'd have available.
Yep.
Next time, so if you'll just tell Phil that I'll.
Well, we're gonna send that to him tomorrow and talk to him and explain to him that we'll have that.
I'll give it, I'd like to copy it before I.
Yep. I'll let you take it and I'll pick it up from you tomorrow.
Perfect. And then, and then the minutes be available next time.
Alright, back now, the line goes meeting minutes will be done, pretty clear.
Do you have something else, Mr. Adams?
If I can add this in, I would really like to, so this is a purchase order for the seal coating. That we've been trying to get straightened out.
So we got the seal coating for the safety buildings?
Safety building, and this also includes the striping of the town's portion, everything, it stripes a whole parking lot here.
Oh, wow.
Um, for handicap, everything, and doing our building, they'll do that next summer or come springtime. They wanna fill the cracks, they have to route out the cracks and then fill it with this, some kind of a sealant that prevents it. He says, he came up and looked at it, this guy's been doing it for forty years, he said, we should be able to get fif- anywhere between ten and fifteen years out of the pavement that's there easily, so it's twenty years old now, so now we're basically almost doubling the life of the pavement.
Wow, that's pretty good.
He says the pavement's in not bad shape if you fix these cracks now, cause every year it's only gonna get worse. So it's fifty-nine hundred dollars down, but to do everything including town hall and everything, it is fourteen thousand fifty dollars. So we have three other quotes that we got. We got a quote from, this is New Hampshire Blacktop Sealers, so it's five thousand nine hundred dollars to crack seal it. And then a total including striping the parking lots of town hall and hours, uh, and seal coating it is fourteen thousand fifty dollars. Bryant's paving was thirty-nine hundred dollars to crack seal it and the total job was thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy, this does not include town hall. Striping down here and it did not include striping our, it did include striping at our place, but not here.
And how much was that total?
Thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy. Howard paving said seven thousand eight hundred dollars, um, they didn't do a formal quoting, give it to me over the phone and they do not do striping or crack sealing, all they do is, they spray it and leave it. Um, which, that's not gonna do us any good.
Steve, how did they decide, um, how to stripe it, I'm just curious.
They ask us how we want it done, if there's a separate way you want certain parking lots striped, uh, and they'll come in and do it any way we want it. But they'll give you the ideas of how they've always done certain parking lots on the dimensions that you have, the easiest in and out parking, handicap accessibility and everything.
So I'm just thinking, this parking lot's kind of a strange.
It's kind of an odd setup, so he'll give you suggestions and we can either take them or we can do them any way you want.
On the first one, did he give a separation between striping at the public safety?
It's, should all be in it, it's three pages long.
The page here that he's given us says it's seven fifty based on one day up there and then additional five hundred for here if done at the same time.
Oh.
So comparing, oh, let me ask the, the two, two basic questions. One, since we were looking at using this for ARPA, how much did we, kind of earmark as we're likely to use from ARPA for this project?
Eight thousand nine ninety-five.
Cause I was gonna ask where's the money coming from?
So that's an additional at least, you know, five to six grand compared to what we had said we were gonna, gonna put towards it from our.
So we probably can get that out of the public safety.
The second question is for you, you're suggesting this one, which is the fourteen fifty from Blacktop Sealers. Their striping is seven fifty for one shot and then the additional five hundred here. If we were to break that out, the thirteen two hundred from the other company that you mentioned, plus if we hired these people to come out for the seven fifty to, just to do this place, which wouldn't be the sensible way, but the most expensive way I can see here to do it would then make that second option cheaper, uh, so what is driving the recommendation to New Hampshire Blacktop Sealers?
So they give us a quote for crack sealing, but he, the way I, he explained it to me, what they're gonna do is take a blower and blow out the dirt out of the cracks, this first company is gonna come and they grind the cracks. What they do in the interstate, they grind out the cracks with a grinder and then they fill it, right.
They grind it, the other company blows it.
They just blow out the dirt and they crack seal it.
Okay.
And they'll last a lot longer if we do it that way, that's what they're doing on the highways and.
So that, that part makes sense to me, um, the other question then is since we're now looking at finalizing, fixing, and sealing the top, uh, what about the sign install? Cause that should probably happen before this happens.
If we, if, we need to sit down and explain to you exactly everything about the sign install. Um, we're still waiting for two electricians to give us an updated price for what it's gonna cost just for the electric work to have it sent into the building and hooked up. We could put a pole out there or put a meter on a pole out there for more than ten years for that cost without having any other problems, to get it in the building, running conduit pipe up the building and then in and then the cables go all the way around through the ground and in there, and you gotta run two lines in case one of them fails. So we're talking over, it'll be over ten years worth of payments, I, I think it'll be more cost efficient. It'll be less problematic in the long run if they run a line right down and we put a meter right there at it. It's thirty dollars, thirty-two dollars a month. I, I, I think would be the best way to go, we won't have any problems of running cables underneath, we don't have to worry about tying it in. If you cut across that pavement or go around it, you think how far you're gonna have to go, you can't go under the building cause it's concrete. So we gotta go up the side of the building with conduit pipe and then in and all the way across the backside of the building to attach it.
That's alright, okay.
And we haven't even got the cost for the materials yet for that.
So that's, is that sign we're putting in, so we, with that twenty thousand, that's just a sign that was not electrical?
So based on your thirty-two for, you know, basically ten years, um, are at a little under four grand. And if that's, if that's what it does for not having to have another meter, to tying it all into the, uh, building, to not having to think about meter charges changing in the future, uh, and the fact that we can take it from ARPA funds instead of adding to our budget for every year from this, that point forward. That may be something that actually does make a lot of sense to, to do. Um, so I think we do need to sit down and have that discussion once you have the quotes.
Okay, let me get the final quotes from the other two return, um, electricians and then we'll go from there.
And so, as much as I like this, um, I think we should finish deciding what we're gonna do with that before we sign one to have them do it.
Okay, cause we wanted to get the crack sealing done before winter. Otherwise, it's gonna really put everything off.
Right, and so it would make, i- if for example, there's going to be the conduit run, we could, even if an electrician wasn't available to do everything else, um, it should be perfectly possible to dig what would need to be dug, lay the conduit.
They could do it himself.
Lay, lay the conduit, lay the conduit so that it, it's all there and the electrician can just run the wires through it later. And that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have the electrician run the conduit pipe anyway.
And that, that would, to me, that would, if we're going to do it that way, that would be the, the sensible way to do it, so that then when they come back, they're filling in that as a crack as well, making sure it's all sealed appropriately and taken care of. The question of course is since this is six grand or so above what we had estimated would be used from ARPA, how is our ARPA fund looking at this one?
Um, so in other words, that is an additional six thousand?
The total here is listed as fourteen thousand and change. And you said we had estimated eight, uh, or set aside approximately eight thousand for the project?
Oh, or nine thousand, eight nine nine five, so, so the shortfall is, how much again?
So nine to fourteen is about five thousand dollars.
Five thousand, um, well, and so we're talking about the seal coat, we're not talking about the sign?
No.
Correct.
Okay, uh, there is, right now, there is three thousand dollars in money that has not been specified yet.
How much?
The, about three thou- three thousand seventy-four dollars and ninety-seven cents has not been accounted for yet. Um, all the, the ARPA fund currently has forty-six thousand four eighty-three twenty-eight. Left, but that, most of that is earmarked for other projects. And while I'm on the subject, I mean, I've still got twenty-two eighty-two for the sign.
I was gonna ask that.
We may be able to do something, I mean, the town door project, we have sixteen thousand in there and if they ever finish, which is supposed, is supposed to be here tomorrow as a matter of fact. Then we have an idea of what we have, have to come up with.
What, so we've got that and the sign project to finish, this, the utility trailer, we already did the flooring and a couple other items, what else is left that we have here marked?
Uh, for ARPA, we've got thirty-four sixty-five left for the record retention project. Um, the cold water trailer is twelve thousand, town office, uh, door project, that's sixteen thousand six sixty-five. Uh, safety building sign, twenty-two eighty-two, the seal coat again is eight nine nine five.
Okay, so those are all the ones that we have set aside, okay.
But on the sign, there's no money for electrical.
Um, uh, well, I don't know about electrical, I've got twenty-two eighty-two.
Is that, that's just for the sign, right?
Right, so.
The electrical, we had planned on probably taking it right out of the, our own budget.
Oh, do you have enough money?
So is the sign, is the, there gonna be a further cost for the sign?
I, I mean, I don't know, once, once it's hooked up, so if we hook up.
We paid for the sign, that's what we're saying.
That's, you just have the price hooked just to the meter, but not including going all the way in now.
So will you get a price either way then?
I got a price coming from both, one to hook up from the pole right there and then one to go all the way inside.
Wouldn't it be so much simpler, just hook it to the pole, I mean, price wise and.
It would be a, it would be a simpler set of wiring. Well, not a simpler set of wiring, but it would be a shorter set of wiring and you wouldn't deal with conduit or a long.
Right, or going in there, right, so why are we still considering that then?
That gives you a guaranteed and guaranteed to keep increasing cost of the meter and meter fees going forward, and his suggestion was that it was about a ten-year offset. And so that would be a continually increasing value in the operating budget versus if we cover it, uh, for example, with ARPA or similar to install it once. Then we're basically not paying anything additional ever again, so it's not an extra tax load.
The cost for a meter every month.
Your what?
It'd be the cost of a meter every month, there'd be a, a separate cost for the meter outside.
And currently, the Public Works Building is being paid for by the solar array, whereas this would not.
Kinda like that.
Not that, I mean, I'm just.
Tom?
If you wanna try to put the conduit underneath that driveway, I believe by code, you have to be at least eighteen, twenty inches. That means you're gonna have to have at least two feet wide dug across that top of this backup, go down roughly two feet. If you want this done before winter, that ground will not compact hard enough. You dump gravel in there, it will not compact hard enough to put tire on there, it'll always have a hump in that top for the rest of the life of that parking lot. Cause it will not compact hard enough before you put the tire on it. So that driveway will always have a hump in it right where that, where you dug that ditch across. So that is one major issue. You're gonna ruin that driveway. It'll always go whoop right where you dug that ditch.
Part of it would depend on how, whether you actually need the two feet of an excavator bucket or whether you need to crack it and.
You can't compact it hard enough. That's why, that's why they waited so long on that bridge down there before they tied it.
Yeah, you couldn't do it with a ditch. You wouldn't have enough room. I mean, it just switches only eight inches wide. You wouldn't be able to get down that deep. Without it caving in. There's no way to, to hold it back.
So that was one major, I, I like what your idea is. But it just won't work and, and just do it and then pave it. You can't.
The only other way would be to bring it all the way around and then you're talking a huge expense to go all the way around the parking lot and come in the backside. Sorry.
You can fill it full of tire. Then the price is gonna go.
How about an extension cord?
That's what we do.
That's my kind of electricity.
Or like when we're wrapping sap law, you just put a bunch of sticks and all.
I mean, you run it by Emmett, you'd tell you.
Yeah.
About a night well about that.
But I, I, I think this further solidifies that we need to actually sit down and plan the whole thing.
His suggestion was also, he, he said he didn't wanna try and cut the asphalt if he could get away with it. But let's get a price from it and see where it goes.
What is a metering fee? I mean, I got, we got two, cause we have it out by the barn. Like they were just saying thirty-two dollars. Yeah, that's what it is.
Roughly per month.
Yeah.
Forty-one, thirty-two.
Apparently that was the last one that we got. Or for residential, uh, it's less expensive, but it's your, either your meter fee or your customer service fee is what they often call it. You have an account and we have to do something with it.
Right, cause we get charged. Okay.
Cause they're the only one in town.
All right. Okay, anything else?
That's all for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alaska.
Thank you much.
Been keeping everybody out of trouble in town? No, he's been in Alaska. He was keeping people in Alaska in trouble. That's neat. Alaska, did you like that?
That was beautiful. Absolutely gorgeous.
And he didn't get stuck on a hump of sand, so I think that was good.
Didn't get stranded. No, it was really, really nice.
Just long you don't, there in the winter time, it's okay.
Yeah, I don't.
Me either.
Not fun.
No, thank you. Have a good one. Timber attacks and intent to cuts, Mr. Russell.
He said three and we're supposed to have four.
And I have four.
I just also wanna touch on that because we were talking about the ARPA stuff. We really need to discuss the getting the trailer done with Emmett. Cause he's been saying that he's gonna do that for a while. And if it's not going to be this year for the ARPA stuff, we may wanna just suggest that it be put into the CIT.
And we have to spend the ARPA by the end of next year.
Right.
I have four intent to cuts.
All the taxes are paid.
And that we have no reason to suggest that they not be signed.
They all came in within a couple days. It was amazing. Had none all year long and then all of a sudden.
Yeah, Russell hasn't done a thing the whole year.
I'm with those.
Well, you know, the weather's not been exactly what I say.
Collaborative.
Yeah, right. Cutting stuff down. Yeah, really.
And that does bring up to why I think you're here tonight, cause I think we got public comment. Wish we could bring it up to this along the same.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
I thought we'd get John out of here.
Well, we can do whatever.
Yeah, it's whatever the chair feels like.
Oh, we have the microphone.
Well, the person running the meeting.
That's true.
What? Who's that?
I don't know who that is.
He's doing a fabulous job.
Whoever's doing it's doing great.
No, about that raise, yeah.
That doesn't actually give a location.
It does, it's the map and whatnot.
Well, map and whatnot.
Yeah.
Shut the door and say no more.
Oops.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That was it with that.
Okay. So correspondence?
Well, yes.
It's not in that one.
Yeah, that was the odd.
Whenever I have a stack of folders on my desk and I'm doing it, I'm like, oh, that's what data does.
At the last meeting, you had, um, an action for code enforcement and, um, Russ has prepared the letter. This is for that driveway?
Yep.
Yeah. And the other items, I had just given you a copy of the letter from DOT regarding the close pin bridge road and it has some costs connected with it.
Have you heard anything from? Cause you've tried to contact him, right?
No, I haven't seen the letter.
Oh, this would be.
I believe I will get a contact very quickly, but I won't soon send that letter out.
Well, I haven't heard anything from the close pin bridge people at all.
Well, I don't know why I'm not surprised, but, um, you know, they tell me that it's coming very, very, very soon.
Oh, yes, we've heard that for like a year.
That's what they said last September.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, for a year. Have we heard that?
I mean, I've had a lot of paperwork, uh, regarding close pin bridge with the, with the permit that.
DES.
With DES permits for the mitigation and, and all that. This letter that I've included in your packet, um, was relative to the contract amendment. Uh, with the preliminary engineering, the right of way and the construction. And the preliminary engineering includes the engineering plus the mitigation fee. The right of way, fifty-two, four, one, five. However, that does not include how much, that's the amount they've budgeted, but I'm not sure if that's the amount that's gonna actually happen when they go.
I don't know. I haven't heard a thing.
Go to do it. I mean, you know.
Word.
Um, and then the nineteen eighty-four, uh, one million, nine eighty-four, that will be picked up by the federal government, which they estimate is the construction cost.
Thank God.
Um, and of the, I'm sorry, of, of the preliminary engineering, the right of way, the state will pay eventually twenty percent of that. I mean, eighty percent of that. Vice versa, yeah.
That's good, huh? That's good for us.
So.
Makes it nice.
We've spent about two hundred fifty thousand dollars so far on VSB.
And they thinking about another hundred?
Uh, I guess it's about another seventy.
Yeah, what's another?
I'm not convinced on the right of way figure though.
Yeah. Russ, I have a, just back to the, um, intent to cut where, where it's on Dustin Road. There, there's, there's. Cause that's the town property, correct?
So you were asking about that. So I did reach out to Emmett. And I did reach out to Rick Evans and Emmett contacted a forest ranger that he knew. And said, due to the nature of where the trees were, it did not count for timber tax.
Yeah, I'm talking about the duh, the thirty thousand on Dustin Road.
The Dustin Road one.
Is that, is that his property or is that the town's property for the pit?
It's the last one?
It could be his property, but I didn't, I know that that was, cause there should be, there should be a contract of some sort and I didn't know who. I think it would should be with us, the town, cause we own the property.
I would think I've not ever seen a contract.
I just went and made sure the taxes were paid.
That's the town of Webster.
That is, well then.
Yeah, we paid our tax.
Well, I was just making sure. He may own Lynn, I don't know that. So there should be, um.
So then we're gonna need to waive the taxes on that one.
Not necessarily.
Right, necessarily.
Well, usually the, I mean, the logger sometimes pays.
They pay the tax, yep. Most of the time. That's why they sign the intent to cut.
But.
Is because they're responsible for the tax.
We don't have, we do not have, that I'm aware of, a contract for that job.
Yeah. Cause it, in, in the state RSA, you're supposed to have, anytime you cut timber, you have to have a contract with whoever owns the property. So we should probably look into that.
We should have one because it should be for both there and for the clearing of the safety building. Cause those were not the same land, but.
They were the same bid?
Yeah.
Yep. And there should be, you know, and, cause it, on your contract, it needs to either list the value, amount, whatever. He's charging or paying or whatever the, which we don't really know.
And I'm going to expect that, uh, we just need to ask for that from probably Emmett, since it was Emmett's domain to take care of that bidding. So we should, we should just make sure we have a copy of that.
All right.
But it should be a contract with the town of Webster and.
Which, which they, he may have been in based on being the road agent and us saying, yeah, go do this thing after giving appropriate bids.
Yeah, it could be. Yeah. Very good.
So let's just ask for that so we have a copy.
Okay.
And if not, we'll deal with that.
So, uh, the final thing I had in correspondence was just a thank you note from the BNA. For our annual donation and then they, they gave you a little background of what you do.
Okay.
And that's it?
That's it.
So.
People don't like their correspondence.
Public comment. We usually get lookout, we don't see anybody. So now you're back here and saw you.
Well, I heard there was five other people ahead of me.
Boy, they don't say much though, John.
Um, update on my house. I've got it, it's torn down. The chimney's still standing. I may try to salvage that, but it may be torn down as well. I do have a little bit of the floor left. It's just covering over my heating system. I do not know if the cellar hole will get in this fall. I have contaminated artesian well. So I'm, I've got that to deal with. Um, I'm gonna probably have to put in some type of a filtration system. So that is my next step I'm dealing with. And if we get it to cellar hole this fall, hopefully we will, but. So I'm hoping I can get that extension on the trailer.
When, when is that set to?
That expired Friday.
Oh. Last Friday, this Friday?
That expired.
That's Friday.
That was kinda brought up now.
For the last week, we've been just kinda tearing down the foundation and little bit of the floor and.
You don't have anything to do all day. Keep you out of trouble.
So I believe where this was left last time was that it was to be looked at for reapproval with a uh, building permit, correct?
Yep.
Uh, so have you applied for the building permit?
I have not. I mean, you, I, as I understood it, you was, as long as I was showing that I was doing something and hopefully I could get a cellar hole in by spring. At this point, we're hoping maybe we could find a eighteen hundreds cape or something. It's just a, a frame. I don't want the whole house. So I mean, I can't really put a foundation in till I get the size. So I really can't go to planning board, say, this is what I'm gonna build. So I'm kinda, don't know what to tell them I wanna do. You know, as far as putting a cellar hole in.
This might be premature me saying this, cause I can't remember what happened. I just.
If I don't find one.
Just be aware that, what is the timeframe before, like, he gets like a, or would he even get an impact fee?
There shouldn't be an impact fee.
Okay, good. Well, that's what we had a discussion.
My opinion, there shouldn't be.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Cause he's doing a teardown and a rebuild.
Right.
So he would.
In the same.
Get an impact fee.
Yeah, I think the only way you trigger an impact fee is, is it like three years that there hasn't been anything after you've torn down or something like that?
That is a debate for the planning board.
So, so maybe there's one after a, a long period of time.
Right, and that's why I just.
Been torn down, it's new build.
Okay, good. I just don't want that to come up and be a problem.
Generally, when you do a teardown and a rebuild, there's a teardown right into a rebuild.
Right.
Does that happen to somebody? Kind of, kind of. It's kind of messy. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up. I just don't want you to say, what the heck is this?
I mean, like I just had a lot of tests. It had a funny smell. Now I got that to deal with. That's gonna be four or five grand probably to get that set up. I'm lugging water right now for my horses.
So you had an artesian well and it went bad?
Yes.
Really? How far do you go down?
It's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Really? Wow. And you're on the hill?
Yeah.
Jeez.
I think the, uh, like I don't have the minutes and stuff from our last meeting when we said what we were expecting to do and expecting.
I believe if, was said stated as long as the foundation was in by next spring. If I.
I thought it was all contingent upon a building permit process happening. But I could be completely wrong on that remembrance. So my suggestion would be that since this has come up in public comment, not as an item, that we request all the information and put it on the agenda next time. And please provide copies of whatever was there before also to John to make sure that, uh, anything that needs to be there or that may have been said to be there, that you can make sure it's taken care of.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Right.
Make sure we do what we say and you say what you do. Right? I don't know if I said that right, but.
Oh, I get you.
Yep. All right.
I just don't know exactly what, uh, if I gotta go to planning board, what to actually.
For a building permit, you just need to fill it out.
Just to fill one out.
Russ can probably help you with that.
So there's a building permit packet on the town's website.
Yeah, but don't you have to tell them what you're building?
That is true.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't. I wouldn't know what size building I'm building. If I go and pick up an old cape, it's a twenty-four foot by eighty foot or twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot.
Well, you would need to figure that out.
Well, I can't do that till I find one. You don't just go down to Home Depot and pick one up.
But we do allow mobile homes, so you could put the mobile home.
Yeah, I ain't buy no mobile home.
Well, you have, well, don't you have one there?
Yeah.
You put it on a slab until you get something else.
I already got one set now.
Well, I, I, I think we'll look up and see what we talked about. Well, I, I, I think we'll look up and see what we've talked about and then that way, you can be aware of it and we can be aware of what we agreed on and if we need to make adjustments from there, then.
Right.
I wanna build a new house, is what I wanna do.
Right.
But yeah, they have an old post and beam and then refab it.
They're pretty hard to find, I would think.
They're right there.
They are, really?
People tear them down.
They exist, but they are hard to find.
Cool, the posts and beams, the, the structure, the frame is solid.
One of the guys that I race with and stuff, his, his company is basically specializes in doing refurbishments of that stuff or rebuilding in the same manner as the post.
I can't, I can't go buy one today and, 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 and take them timbers and set them outside and for next year. They're gonna be all stained and, and you, you gotta put them in storage. Can't just set them things, them timbers outside.
But I assume you also didn't just start looking today, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this has been.
You can buy them frames, you're gonna put them on.
Right, or was it six? How long ago was it?
I don't even remember.
Quite a while.
It was like a hundred and eighty days.
That was six months ago.
Okay, yeah, so about six months, right, because we were talking about the timing and dealing with winter and cement.
Okay, so.
If I don't find one by spring, we're gonna do a stick built building, is what we're gonna do.
Just thinking outside the box to try and, and help John. The building permit pro, uh, process. If he were to go through that process as if he was gonna stick build what he wants and then finds the post and beam that he would rather have, how flexible is that process?
Well.
To be able to make an adjustment?
He can make an adjustment.
I was gonna say.
Okay.
That's not the end of the world.
Yeah.
Um, the, the difference is if it's a bigger one, we'd have to adjust the building, your permit fee for the additional square footage. And if it's smaller, then we would have to do.
Give me my money back.
Correct.
Well, that we don't like.
Now, we don't like. So my suggestion is to just put it in for what you're planning and then figure it out from.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
Yeah.
We don't plan on building very big, it's just two-bedroom house and.
Because if you can get that in, we could get that approved, because you don't need a driveway permit. You don't need, you just need the plans and to fill out the paperwork.
Yeah, the septic's in, well's in, everything's there.
Right, you don't need any of that, because it's our existing. You just need a, and are you doing your own electricity, or be your own electrician and your own plumbing?
Yeah.
So then you just sign a waiver to that, too.
Yeah.
So.
Well, at least we'll be following along and you'll have the time that you need to do what you need to do.
Yeah, and everything will be done the way that we set out and said that we were gonna do it, so.
Right, the big thing is we would need a site plan. So we need to know where the house was going.
The site plan?
Yeah, where are you gonna put the house?
It's gonna be pretty much right where the one we tore down is.
You just gotta draw it.
I mean, well, then, five feet one way or the other.
You just gotta draw it on a piece of paper.
They take sketches here.
We take sketches.
Oh, like sometimes, right?
Can you just print out the packet and hand it to him?
Yeah.
That'll be really easy and then you can just go fill it out.
Yeah.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll be damned when you're open.
Yeah, that's fine.
Pick it up this week.
And then we can discuss it if you have any questions I can answer.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, are we gonna approve the, the minutes? Select board motion and approvals, approval of draft minutes from nine, five.
So we'll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, signing of documents and motions for payment.
Well, I have a very long motion for trust funds.
Oh, God.
And when that's in our package, you mean?
Oh, yes.
And.
Wow, macro.
Yes.
Is Dave gonna read all of them?
So I don't, I don't know how you'd like to do that.
Remember how.
Can we show the camera?
Yeah, right, there you go.
Can we post it? Good idea.
I, do we need to list all of the individual invoice numbers?
I don't think you do.
Okay.
In, in the motion.
So in that case, I would suggest that rather than the top motion, that we just do a motion for each fund, just, actually, no, we can do the top motion and then just the amount from each fund. And they'll be provided the invoices.
And if you wanted to see the bills, I have, um, I think I have fifty-seven bills there.
Fifty-seven bills, I don't keep that in.
I will say that all of these would have already, or let me clarify. All of these have already been approved as bills that we have paid with our normal check warrant.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so we've already, I've already reviewed these, then?
Yes.
Most of them, well, one week he did it.
Um, you haven't reviewed those.
Okay.
What you have done, well, you have as far as the, yeah, I'm sorry, in the manifest.
Yeah.
Because we reviewed them and then signed them for the manifest.
Yeah, never mind, I'm sorry.
So this is for us to get our money back for spending in the manifest.
Okay.
Instead of every week asking for.
Right, which is something that's kinda changed, correct?
Right, and of course, this is a very unusual time that we've just got a lot of activity with this.
Push it all in before the end of the year.
Oh, boy.
That's right.
Did you want this, Dave?
Well, this I have this, you have, you left that there? What are you looking at?
Oh, that, yeah, that, that's what I'm scrolling through right now.
Yeah.
And, does the number match? Yes, perfect, okay. Do you have this, okay. Uh, so.
But I like when you say it.
I review that the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and ten cents payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from the capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds as listed now. Seventy thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents from Bridge Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. Eighty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirty cents from Highways and Roads Capital Reserve Fund. Hundred and one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund. Fourteen hundred dollars from the Property Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund. And one thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents from the Technology Expendable Trust Fund. Thus totaling the requested two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and ten cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Oh, they're pretty good.
Even though there's a ton of those, I still like doing it quarterly method.
Well, and, like, we've already gone through and done the due diligence of checking them as we go along anyway. So I, I think this works out. Unless we actually have to list every single one individually, I think this is definitely the way to do it.
All right, so, anybody else got anything else to say? You say it way more elegant than that.
I don't even know what I say each time, so, thanks.
So I do have other things to sign.
Uh-huh.
Oh, wonderful.
And one is the manifest and there are bills.
That I haven't seen.
There's the stack of news.
You have not seen those.
I think one time I did it.
I, I don't think I brought them last week.
That's right.
Yeah.
Because there's a few I don't recognize.
Good help is so hard to find. Here is the payroll.
Ass whack.
Wendy's favorite.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, this, that, that's the person coming for the, the talk for the conservation commission.
The tick tock.
The tick tock.
Tick tock.
That was huge. I know I've asked this before, what's galls?
Uh, it's, uh, police uniforms.
Uniforms, okay, thank you. Ah, yes.
Russ, a police hat.
Our wonderful three hundred and eight thousand dollar payment monthly to the school. The usual stuff, for a total of three hundred fifty-five thousand each. That is wonderful what overtime will do.
Oh, yes.
Well deserved, but wonderful what overtime does.
Is that Russell again?
I wish I got over.
Can we get overtime?
We're like overtime, all right.
Um, and then, I don't think you made a, this is regarding the money that, uh, for the credit card payments. They don't wanna do that, because we could have it in our drawer.
That's true.
Yep.
Sign your life awakening. I'm mad at myself for not realizing that was the, the Dustin Road lot.
Well, it won't be the last time you're mad at yourself.
Plus, I do it daily.
I just plugged it.
Dave asked me a question, I'm kinda like deer in the headlights.
I was just like, the taxes paid, yes, next, are the taxes paid? Yes, next.
You're not used to the town doing that business.
No. And that's what I told I'm just like, I'm used to taking them.
Could I have the trust fund stuff back, please?
She's, oh, I think she's done with it.
Yeah.
Oh, the trust fund ones, yeah, yeah.
Mary will want those.
Can we sign on that?
Uh, you, you, you did the motion, yeah. Second-hand emotion.
Don't start that.
Oh, it's too late. I've been doing it since nine this morning.
It was.
Me on it since nine AM.
I don't know.
Any else, Dana?
Uh, thank you, no, that's it.
Do you have any non-publics?
No, I do not.
Gosh, look at that.
I mean, we come up with something if you need.
Right.
In that case, I would move that we close at eight thirty-six.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's for you to say, you're right.
All in favor, all in favor, aye. Trying to think of a wise butt thing to say, but I can't think of anything, Dave, right now.
Sorry I was late, half of ninety-three was closed.